A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the two of the republic, for which it's a nation, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I just want to make an announcement that we are going to push tomorrow's budget hearing to 11:00 a.m. instead of 10:00, and we will be taking the lunch break at 1:00 p.m. tomorrow. All right, so here, do you want to put the slide up? I'm gonna do a budget presentation, slide presentation, and then we'll kick it off with our first department head, Sam Clary, for help. So I just want to first off by recognizing our finance department and all the department heads, the town employees, for their tremendous work throughout this very long budget process. It has been a difficult few months with the rest of our fellow employees and the transition to a new administration. And I want to thank everyone for staying positive and open to change as we move forward. I especially want to thank our Director of Public Health, Sam Clary, and his department, along with Chief Dennis McCarthy and the town, our town's Emergency Management Director, for going above and beyond the call of duty this past year. I also want to thank Selectman Tom Flynn, Board of Finance Chair Jim Brown, and RTM Leader Pam Iacrono for their consistent input over the last several months, working with me to help craft a fiscally responsible budget that addresses the concerns of the Board of Finance, and the RTMs, and the needs of our town in this very difficult year. I also want to thank all our elected officials and volunteers who serve on boards and commissions that make our community a better place to live and work. It is my honor to serve as Fairfield's first elect woman and to work with the men and women in our town hall. Moving Fairfield forward, the budget will continue to modernize town government with the introduction of best practices and technological improvements that are grounded in customer service-centric approach for a more user-friendly experience. And we've been talking about this, I talked about this last budget cycle, and we have been doing these things. The budget services Fairfield's long-term liabilities, it expands senior and disabled tax relief, and most importantly, it preserves a firm foundation for our town. This foundation is strengthened by paying off debt, maintaining our AAA bond rating, financing important funds that keep our town on solid financial ground, and increases spending for the Board of Education. Looking back on 2020 was a difficult year for many, especially those who lost loved ones, friends, family to COVID-19. At times, nearly 20% of people were unemployed, while wages remained flat or declined for many in our community, and while small businesses were struggling. My goal for the last year was to help our businesses grow, but I had to pivot to assist them so that they could just survive, while also working with our town's emergency management team to keep our community safe. This included providing small business grants and streamlining permitting to keep businesses open amidst the new regulations designed to stop the spread of the virus. We were also able to completely reopen town government within 48 hours of the initial shutdown, with all but central services operating remotely, and for the first time in our town's history. Despite the challenges the pandemic brought, we were still able to initiate a reorganization of town departments, a restructuring of personnel, employee training, online permitting, and addressing root causes of corruption to ensure that it never happens again. But we still have lots of work to do. The state and town continue to struggle with the economic consequences of the pandemic. My budget proposal looks to support our residents and businesses while also creating an environment for growth. Fairfield at a glance, 62,045 residents, 139,122 is median area income. We have 20,641 households, 66 adults hold a college degree or higher. We have 459.6 town employees, 1,483 Board of Education employees. We have AAA-rated public schools, 35% of households have children in our public schools, and we are a AAA community. 2020 budgetary objectives and goals: Support economic development, maintain excellent schools, modernize town government, invest in town infrastructure, fund long-term contractual obligations. The budgetary highlights include increases last year's budget by more than $7.5 million, which is a 4.1% increase, second-largest increase in a decade, funds 100% of payments towards long-term contractual obligations, replenishes accounts used to subsidize last year's 0% tax increase, which funds retiree healthcare, maintains our town reserves, our town pension benefits, and salary reserves, funding delayed maintenance of town buildings, roads, bridges, and technology. First town reorganization status: Total full-time positions reduced from 463.6 to 459.6. The VRIP participants were 17, and the net position reduction was four positions. The salary savings resulting from this is $613,000. Expands and improves senior tax relief to maximize benefits for our lowest-income seniors, and it limits the mill rate increase to 1.98%. I do want to take this moment to thank Chris DeWitt, the Chairman of the Senior Tax Relief Committee, for all his hard work with his committee, with working with the RTM. The next slide is the budget summary, and we did a little different this year. So what we have is our Board of Education line from 2020 to 2021, as the budget changed. We added the shared expense, because I think it's important to note that there are shared expenses that are not included in the Board of Education budget that the town assists with, and we can talk about this later in a few slides that breaks it down a little bit more. Town expenditures, net revenue, you can see those numbers, and then the mill rate increase at 1.98. Where the money comes from? So our current, you can see the current year tax levy, how it changes from 21 to 20, and the change is 6.34%. The prior-year tax interest lien, the change is down 2.9. Other town fees and charges is 3.3%. Investment income, down 3109. State municipal aid, 0.22%. And fines, 6.7%. Rental income, 7.95%. Where the money goes? So as I was alluding to earlier, if you just go down to the shared town Board of Ed, these are shared expenses: Risk management, workman's comp, supplemental contribution to fund balance, and debt service, and that's where that number comes in from earlier. And you can see, we can talk more about it after we open up the budget hearings, but you can see across the board salary and wages, these are reserves from contracts that were, you know, obviously agreed to long before I came into office, and reserves for unsettled contracts. The OPEB fund, which took a huge amount, that alone was almost a $4 million increase, because we realized last year we created cliff to be able to deliver a 0% tax increase for residents during a most unprecedented time in our lifetime, and obviously, many residents in our town were losing their jobs or having their salaries reduced dramatically, along with businesses being closed or having a reduction of business. We go down to pensions, and then capital replacement, and then paving, we're including a million in the operating budget, health insurance costs, fees, and professional services. I do want to note, though, if you exclude the OPEB cliff funding, the town's spending increases at 2.37%. The next slide shows the spending comparison. If you look, the overall budget includes the town budget, education expenses paid by the town, debt service on capital projects, and nurses, et cetera, and then the Board of Education budget. And the Board of Education budget plus the education expenses paid by the town total 65% of the town's total budget. The next page shows another slide, budget increases by the dollar and percentage. 87% of the fiscal year 2022 increases are to fund education and long-term liability, doing more with less. This budget efficiently utilizes just 13% to provide funding for investments in technology, safety and training equipment for law enforcement and firefighters, service vehicles and equipment for public work, a redesigned town website that allows us to communicate and interact with residents more efficiently, and salary and wage reserves for unsettled contracts. And you could just look at the numbers there and the breakout. Now, this is a budget, I mean, this is a slide that we had used in last year's budget, but I thought it was still relevant today to just show the trend in spending. The projected budget requests are based, this is based on a 3.63 average yearly increase, and you could see the changes, the cost per pupil, including town spending in 2011 was $16,633.21, at our highest level of enrollment, and in 2020, it was $22,423 per student. During last year's budget proposal, I had called upon our superintendent and Board of Education, based on this slide, saying that, you know, we just couldn't, I didn't believe that we could continue to afford that level of increase year after year, it's just unsustainable for our taxpayers, and I had, talking about this last year for reorganization efforts, and I understand it's been a really difficult year, and I know it as well as anyone, and I worked really hard to do reorganization efforts on the town side so that we could realize savings going forward. And I will continue to do that, but I just thought that this slide, I wanted to keep it in from last year so we could have that discussion and continue to have it. The Board of Education's budget, Board of, request, 194,084, 2022, 5.19% tax increase was the request that came. My budget includes a $2 million reduction to the $9.6 million requested. $2 million is less than 1% of the total educational expenditures, budget increase of more than $7.5 million over last year, and the Board of Health, Board of Ed's health insurance increases at 11.25, and I've had a discussion with the superintendent, we've also checked, and this number is, I'm being told that it will trend down, that was a high number, it should be less than that, and we'll be checking that with the superintendent as we move through the budget process. 10 years since the last Board of Ed operating budget has been conducted. All educated-related expenses represent 65% of the total town budget, and I believe that this budget continues the town's commitment to education. Improvement of town services and efficiencies by modernizing town government, online permitting software to offer a one-point entry to interact with departments, planning, zoning, conservation, historicity, engineering, health, sewer, building, fire marshal, tax collector, and tax processor. Automated time and attendance workforce management, automated system to monitor employee time, control labor costs, minimize compliance risks, while improve workforce productivity and our service to our public. Digital transformation, upgrade conference rooms to allow for virtual meetings. So in summary, I believe that this is a fiscally responsible budget. It protects taxpayers, enables growth, significantly increases education spending, provides critical maintenance for town infrastructure, limits mill rate increase despite impact of the pandemic, funds long-term contractual obligations, and preserves the AAA credit rating and long-term fiscal health of our town. And I will, I think I will open this up, I'll ask my colleagues, do you want to open it up for discussion now, or would you like to go right into our department head?
Brenda, it's, yeah, it's Tom. I'd like to take just a second, if I might. I wanted to say thank you to yourself for including me in this budget process early this year. I'd also like to recognize the hard work of Jared and the entire finance staff, and Linda Gardner, who stuck around and provided support and help in putting the budget together, as well as Tom Bremer, who worked alongside both yourself and Jared to put this, to craft this budget. You asked me to come in and provide some context and history of past practice and policies regarding some, what I would refer to as more esoteric items in the budget, and I was happy to do so as it related to the long-term liabilities, the fund balance, bonding policy, salary reserves, the mill rate and collection rate and revaluation, and the impact of that. And I was happy to do so, and I commend you for the work that all of you did on the budget. I'm proud of what's been put in the budget to sustain the financial foundation that's been built over a long period of time, and to repair some of the things that needed to be done last year in order to assist citizens with the 0% tax increase. We're not out of the woods yet. COVID continues to have an economic impact in the state of Connecticut and in the town of Fairfield, unemployment rates are still high, and salaries are still stagnant or down as compared to pre-COVID levels, and I think this budget goes a long way towards recognizing that. It's also important to note, I think, in terms of a clarification, absolutely correct that this budget impacts the mill rate by a 1.98%, which is right near the rate of inflation, which should always be a goal that we have. We should, however, point out that due to the impact of revaluation, many people are going to see a much higher increase in their taxes due to where they live and the valuations that have happened of their neighborhoods by an independent outside firm that is mandated to be done every five years by the state of Connecticut. And I know there's been some consternation and some confusion, some questions out there, and truly, it's important to point out that this firm was independent. This firm, this process needs to be done based on state regulations every five years. My understanding is it needs to be reviewed and the process is ratified by the state of Connecticut. But when we were crafting, and you asked me to be part of crafting this budget, cognizant in all our minds was the fact that certain neighborhoods this year get hit due to the revaluation, and they're going to see a higher tax increase. So even though, you know, 1.98% doesn't sound like a lot, given all the economic factors as well as the impact of revaluation, it is a fair amount to many people in town, and that's got to be factored into any of our thinking. So I thank you for all the work and effort. I thank you personally for your leadership, and I was proud to be a part of, a small part, but a part of helping craft the budget, so thank you.
Thank you, Tom. You know, obviously, your historical perspective as former Chairman of the Board of Finance was invaluable during this process, and, you know, as I mentioned earlier, I do thank the Chairman of the Board of Finance and RTM Leader Pam Iacrono for also putting in their effort, you know, from their long, many years of serving the town on their budget process. I think it's been extraordinarily helpful in allowing me to craft a budget that I think is going to carry forward, carry the town forward in the future.
Good morning. I'd also like to say thank you to all of those people who put in their blood, sweat, and tears, mostly in an unpaid way, over many, many years, and the historical knowledge that people bring to the table, and the depth of experience in this is certainly something. I'm appreciative, and I think if people in town knew how much goes into this, they would also, you know, be grateful for it, and sometimes even kinder with their words and the way we get to answers and solutions. I do want to just comment on a couple of things in your Fairfield at a glance summary page. I do think it's worth noting, but what was not on that page was that we are a town that is 10% not white at last study, and that, for me, certainly, the way that I've been looking at this budget since I received it on Friday has been through a lens of inclusion, equity, diversity, and how some of the budget decisions, line items, may have an impact on all of our residents. And so I do think that is something worth mentioning, and that the Board of Ed budget also looks hard at the total child, and I think that that was something worth noting that we'll get into tomorrow, I imagine. Mr. Flynn, Tom, I would like to jump on something you said, because I think it is confusing for people that aren't in the weeds of this, that that 1.98 number that has been shared publicly about the mill rate increase, and we can talk about that down the line, I would love to get into the department head discussions, but when you look at the total tax increase, to say that it's 1.9%, 1.98, or whatever the exact number is, it's not a real estimation of what's going to happen when I open my tax bill. I'm not going to just see a 1.98% increase to the dollars that I will have to, to the check I'll have to write, and I think that is worth diving in. I'm not saying it's good or bad, I think that we need to really look at the way we're investing in our town and what those numbers reflect. I do have a question, and again, perhaps further down the line when we get to this line item, salary savings of $600,000 and some was referenced, and yet, on one of the pages in the book, it says that there's a 2.46 increase in salaries, so for me, that's just something that's confusing, and I think that having an opportunity to see the overall reorganization plan, which is excellent, I think it's work that is long overdue, and we all agree on that, it would be great to be able to see that plan so we can understand how some of these salary and staffing decisions are impacted by that plan. So just some of my bigger-picture thoughts as I've been going through this, and thank you again for your time, and all the staff, and Linda, and Jared, Pam, Chris, Tom, for your input on this on behalf of the town, and I look forward to a robust discussion over the next couple of days.
Thank you, Nancy, and I just want to quickly note that the 2.46 is for wage reserves going forward in the budget, based on past contractual obligations, just to be able to know that we have that. The $600,000 is savings due to VRIP, and I, you know, I wanted to include the reorg in more detail, but at the end of the day, I thought that the budget presentation should strictly to the numbers, and I was going to host a reorganization forum for elected officials and the public, should they choose to want to attend, to go over the whole reorg, because it's a lot more in-depth and complicated than what we should be doing just for a budget presentation.
And then I would respectfully say where it is impacted or where there is a direct correlation, perhaps that's something that you can point out, or the department heads could point out as much as they're part of that discussion, because I do think it would help contextualize the decisions being made.
Absolutely.
And Nancy, one comment that you made that I think I can address, and Jared would have specific numbers on this, not me, but when you referenced the 613 in savings and then the 2.47 increase, if the reorganization efforts had not happened, that 2.47% increase would have been higher by that 613, that's where that reference comes in, so it would have been a higher number in the budget if not for the reorganization. Some of that is because of the wage reserve that needed to be put in, and you'll also recall, or maybe you won't, I didn't at first until I started diving into this a little bit. Prior year, they took out the wage reserve to get to the zero, that's one of the quote-unquote cliffs that they had put in, and so this year was not only making up that wage reserve, it was doing the wage reserve for this year for the unsettled contracts, so that's closer to a 4% versus, or 4, or 5, or whatever's in there, versus what was in there, what it would need to be for one year. So that's something to take into consideration.
Okay, thank you. I do have one other question in the short term. Are we, do we know, we know what the median income is, do we have any way of calculating the unemployment rate at this current time?
We were looking at that early on the budget process, but I don't have an up-to-date number, but it's something we can get for you.
Thank you, I would appreciate that.
One of the things, as I understand, is do we not have, because I've asked this previously, I don't think we have an unemployment rate for the town, I think we have an unemployment rate for Fairfield County, is that not correct?
Yeah.
Tom, this is Jared, there is one for the town that the
Perfect.
Your Department of Labor publishes.
Perfect, I have not seen that one, I've only seen it as it relates to the county, so that'd be great.
I'm trying to remember when they publish each month, but we'll get you up to date on that.
I have no further questions, and I look forward to hearing from all the department heads, and thank them in advance for all the hard work that's been put into this.
All right, well, thank you, and first off is our Director of Health, Public Health, Sam Clary, so take it away, Sam.
What page are we going to on the budget book, then? If you don't mind?
219?
219, yes.
Thank you, and moving forward, if you could reference that when each person is speaking.
Hi, everybody, thanks, thank you, Brenda. My budget represents a 0.04 increase year-over-year. It's nearly entirely due to contractual salary obligation increases, and a small portion of that is, and related line items like social security and things like that, and the only other increase is an increase in fuel, which is just, we follow the formula that the finance department follows, so we're asking for no additional positions, no additional increases in other line items, most every line item is at a 0% increase. I'll leave it for questions.
Are you getting what you need? And thank you, Sam, to you and your team, unbelievable. What a year, nobody thought, when we Um, what a, what a year. Nobody thought when we sat at this table last year that this is the year we did, we'd have. Sorry, Madam First Select Woman May, go ahead. I just kind of jumped in there.
Absolutely.
Okay, sorry. Um, just to echo again, thank you to you and your team. Um, what an extraordinary year it's been. And given that, um, you know, I appreciate that you're doing what you need to do.
Your input is invalid.
To keep, um, was that me? Is my input invalid? Did you all hear that? Can you hear me? I'm told that all the time at home. So you know, here we are.
I'm gonna press that button every time, Nancy.
Uh, I basically want to make sure, are you giving yourself enough money to do what you need to do? Because in, in a world where we're now looking at a light at the end of the tunnel, uh, where likely COVID-19 will not, will become endemic to us. Um, is this enough? Are you getting what you need to keep, to, to carry on, to make sure that Fairfield is healthy, safe?
Sure. Yeah. Fortunately, uh, you know, in this situation, we're getting uh, a fairly good amount of grant funds from the state and the federal government. And so we have uh, you know, a current stable stream of grant funds for the next uh, two years uh, that will help us assist with this. So like, for example, we've hired uh, you know, uh, ticket contact tracers, those are all on grant funds, do all part-time individuals. Uh, so that, we have grant funds that are covering most of the increases in costs related to us uh, for now. Uh, and so I think, you know, the best thing to keep things level for now. And I think as we move forward, there'll be uh, you know, potentially even more grant funds available to us to uh, you know, to, to, to finish this and, and get us back to fully recovered.
And then that includes enough in case like vaccine sites and anything that you might need to do to, to help what Connecticut has been doing pretty well so far.
Yeah. So we're, yeah, we, we are continuing to work on that and, and these grant funds will cover, you know, the, some of the, so with some of the work related to that. In addition, with the vaccine, we can submit for uh, insurance reimbursement. So we will cover our costs through insurance reimbursement.
Okay. Well, I hope you get some sleep. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey Sands, uh, again, thank you for all the efforts to you and your team for the past year. Um, following up on Nancy's question, I see that your department request was 3,216 and you got 3,207. So you're um, it, it seems like your request wasn't cut that much, just following on what Nancy was saying. And, and the one cut that I see was in, I'm assuming hours or actually in, in, which is related to Sanitarian A um, is listed in my budget book. So maybe that's a rate issue there. Is that correct?
Well, the position will be uh, kept vacant for a time being. So the position is vacant due to a, a retirement.
Okay. Perfect. So you got everything that you needed based on your request? Okay. Thank you.
I have no further questions.
See, I mean, either. Thank you, Sands.
Okay, the next, uh, what's our next one here? Uh, we have Attorney Baldwin on the line. Uh,
Page?
78.
Page 78.
Thank you.
Attorney Baldwin, oh, there you are.
I'm here. So uh, I, just a, a brief overview of uh, where we are this year and uh, what we're looking for next year. Um, it appears that we are kind of tracking to uh, to spend the budgeted amount for fiscal year 21 uh, that you see on page 78. And uh, for fiscal year 22, we requested a hundred thousand dollars increase mostly to cover uh, possible uh, increase in appeals and litigation associated with the, the assessment. You go over generally the, the, the work that we've been doing and, and many of the outside council that have been retained. Uh, but as you clearly understand, especially this board who uh, I consult with on a regular basis, um, you understand that we're, we're looking um, for restitution with regard to the fill pile. And uh, COVID has been a additional unanticipated uh, burden on legal services, but that slowed down um, considerably now that we're kind of in step with that process. But the beginning, it was a flurry of activity. And um, the rest is the usual business of, of the legal business of the town in all aspects. Um, as I said, we're on track uh, for this year's budget, as I understand it, talking with Jared. And uh, next year, we're looking for that, that increase for the reasons I explained.
Hey, um, it's Tom. Can I ask a question? How you doing, Jim?
Good. How are you, Tom?
Good, thank you. Um, I'm looking at, and this is more for Jared. It's more probably an accounting question, Jared. If you go to page three in the budget book as compared to page 79, um, so we have an assessment appeals open court log. And we've increased that this year to $500,000. My understanding was that was the reserve quote unquote for the increased cost related to uh, court cases, as Mr. Baldwin just um, alluded to. Why would we need that 500 plus the extra 100 in fees and professional services and legal? I, it's an accounting question. I think.
If the 500,000 that's here?
I'm sorry, I can barely hear you.
So this is going to be, can you hear me?
Not, not well. I don't know if Nancy can.
Hang on.
Sure. Thank you, Jared.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The 500,000 that's on that front page, on page three, uh, that's more related to the revenue loss as a result of any uh, appeals that end up going to court and reducing the value of assessed property versus what we put into the legal services budget, which is a spending item.
I don't, I don't understand that. Sorry, I don't understand that. Cause so this is the actual tax revenue loss? Is that what you're saying? Not the legal cost?
That's correct.
And which is separate from the BAA adjustment, which never goes to court. That's just related to what happens at the commission level, correct?
Correct. As a result of the appeals process, not the court process.
Right. So that, so the appeals on here for 500,000 is lo- is lost revenue, which equates to the overall value. And then this, this increase of 100,000 relates to the actual trial costs, right?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. You're welcome.
I uh, have a question. Good morning. In looking back on page 79, how much, I mean, it is a massive, massive jump. And um, I understand again, extraordinary circumstances. Um, how much of this is one individual salary for the town attorney versus consultants versus part-time lawyers versus i- is it possible to see more of a breakdown or at least an anticipated breakdown of what might happen as we move forward into the year ahead?
Um, certainly the answer is yes. So I'll need Jared to, to help me break that down. I don't have that information in front of me right now.
Okay. Thank you, Jared. I would.
Yeah, that count, that line item is a combination of um, town attorney as well as some outside contracted firms that we work with. So we can get you a breakdown of that yet.
Yeah, thank you. I think it would, it would be helpful to give people a sense of, of how just how much outside help is warranted and, and what is anticipated. Um, and again, I understand extraordinary year, difficult issues. I just uh, think it will help for, for clarification. Thank you very much. I have no further questions.
Police, is that? Uh, page 174?
174, uh, complete budget is that. And I believe uh, Chief Calmaris is on the line.
Good morning. Morning, Chief.
Morning.
Good morning.
Oh, yeah, I'm fired.
Page 174. Our uh, our budget this year for uh, 22 uh, represents a 3.45% increase uh, over the FY 2021. Um, this budget is uh, very lean and still uh, ensuring the high level of customer service and excellence that the police department and the community expects from our police department. Um, two of the, I mean, three of the primary drivers behind um, our budget increases are contractual salary obligations, which consists of uh, 2% of that 3.45. Uh, in addition to increases to IT to properly investigate computer crimes, which is uh, trending up this year. And uh, statutory obligations for training under the Police Accountability Act. Um, some of the revenue drivers are um, increases in licensing and motor vehicle uh, surcharges. And if anyone has any questions?
So the biggest driver here is your capital outlier, right, Chief?
That's correct.
Can we talk about that real quick? Can we go to that page?
Absolutely.
179, right? By the way, I thought it was hysterical, security cameras in the uh, in the police department. I understand it. It was just, it was the entry system and the security cameras. Just when I was reading, I just chuckled. Particularly the entry system. Um, talk about the vehicles, if you don't mind.
Sure. So uh, last year we were cut by five vehicles. Um, and um, we had projected to try to get back on track with our uh, with our uh, tank car replacement. Um, that was um, reduced uh, with the recommended of 263, 320 from the First Select Woman's Office uh, and the Finance Department. Um, so we're looking at uh, the cost of five vehicles for uh, fiscal year 2022.
So that is five vehicles.
Correct, sir.
Remind us again, how many vehicles um, are part of this replacement plan? I know there's, there's a lot of vehicles within the police department. I'm really talking about the cars and things like that. That's part of this original replacement plan.
Yes, sir. Um, w- what we try to do is the frontline cars that are uh, the most critical. Those are the first responders that are going uh, on calls for service every day. We, we uh, do our best to keep those vehicles within a two-year replacement program. Uh, keep in mind that these vehicles are running uh, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. Um, and day shift, evening shift and midnight shift. So um, they are just, the keys are handed off to the next person coming on shift. And that officer gets out in the same car and uh, continues to run that, that same vehicle.
So how many cars are there though, if, in this replacement plan, if you don't? How many years? Go ahead. Yeah, just remind me. I forget.
So the, the, we have, we have uh, 13 vehicles on the front line that um, are basically our uh, main drivers of uh, you know, first responders. Those are, those are the vehicles that are out on the front lines and, and we look to replace um, those at least every two years. We have a process that um, we push out a car uh, pretty much every two to three months uh, as long as we can uh, make those accommodations.
And how many are on the second line?
Uh, if you give me a sec, we probably have uh, somewhere around 40 on the second line.
So 40 on the second line.
That consists of, well, let me, let me give you a little. What that consists of, yeah. So we have a uh, six-person traffic team with two supervisors. We have uh, six uh, vehicles that are in uh, school safety. We have 16 detectives uh, plus supervisors. Um, so you know, you could, you could see that that adds up fairly quickly. These are specialized units that um, that go to uh, their own areas of responsibility and are uh, you know, doing their work in their own uh, in, under their own purview.
Right. But if we go back to the original 13 on a two-year replacement plan, averages out to about six and a half a year. And now you're not going to buy half a car. So you're looking at between five and six to seven cars a year, not the 10 that was original. If you're going to replace them every, every other year, you're doing five or six a year and keeping them on a rotating basis. Plus they're backed up by, of the 40, let's say, how many of those are true police cars versus other type vehicles? You know what I'm saying?
Right. And, and what ends up happening is as those cars get pushed down through our program, uh, we have some vehicles that uh, get upwards of 120,000. I mean, we returned uh, six vehicles in uh, FY 2021 uh, back to DPW for uh, uses throughout the town also.
Right, right. I remember. I, I know you guys have been doing that forever. But it doesn't sound like the five is that far off, to be candid with you.
Um, it's, it's not far off, but it's uh, it's, it still puts us at a detriment a little bit, but we'll, we're going to make it work another year.
Right. Got it. Understood. Thank you for that. And the security camera upgrades, that's just um, in the holding cell area. I understand that. And the electronic entry system. Um, the tasers, I'll just ask, uh, you, you, the department used to have drug interdiction money uh, and stuff of that sort. Uh, is that not eligible to help with the replacement of the tasers, some of the other items?
Sure. That's referred to as asset forfeiture money.
Yes, thank you.
It is uh, yeah, that's uh, specifically designated to be used for anything to fight the war on crime, uh, the war on drugs. So as long as uh, it's most commonly that the money is coming from uh, drug seizures. Um, that money is to be used for anything that would relate to um, drug interdiction.
And how much, how much is currently in that fund? You know, rough number. You don't need to give me an exact.
I'll, I'll, I think there's uh, about 40,000 in the state fund. And I think there's about uh, 75,000 in the federal fund. And that would be a better question for finance to, to give us a number on that.
And is that money, to the extent, and thank you, the rough numbers are fine, is that money accounted for or allocated for other items that aren't on this list?
That is not.
Okay. So that, would that be a, would that be available to help offset some of the cost of the tasers or something of that sort?
Uh, I don't think it would be able to be, I don't think we'd be able to use that for the cost of the tasers. Um, we have done some creative things with uh, that money, but we want to stay in the, the uh, parameters of the uh, restrictions that they put in place.
Yeah, I thought there were restrictions of once something hits the regular budget, it can't be taken out of the reg- regular budget and funded by this money, as I recall years ago, or something like that.
Yeah. If, if I can also add that the, the 75,000 for the tasers is uh, 75,000 a year with replacement costs to everything that comes with it. That is the, the, the tasers, the uh, training program, the uh, training uh, cartridges that come with uh, training, the, the, for the new taser, chain, training officers for the new tasers. Um, and that is a uh, maintenance program within that five-year span. So you're going to see that over the next five years at $75,000.
And that, that makes sure that every police officer has a taser on him. Is that what the goal that is? Chief, I'm sorry.
Oh, that is correct, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for your.
Thank you for your time, um, and again, uh, so nice to be able to talk to you in this capacity, uh, this year. So congratulations, and thank you for all the time that you and your team have put into this budget. Um, as I had stated earlier, a budget is a reflection of the values of who we are as a town, and, um, I'm so proud of the conversations that you and I have been able to have and look forward to, um, carrying on in a candid and open way as, as we have and, and have found you to be incredibly, uh, open and supportive, um, and with the, uh, best interest of all Fairfield in, in mind. And, uh, again, the patches that you did are certainly a testament to that, and that being something that you did so publicly, pretty much right out of the gate of your, um, tenure as chief is really something to be applauded, and, and thank you for that. Um, in that spirit, you and I had talked, uh, extensively over the weekend, and I want to thank you for your time. And I have no issue with the line items here, um, in your budget. And one thing we had talked about is what I am describing, the spaces in between, and to see, uh, if there was room to, uh, through a lens of equity inclusion, is there room to do some kind of, um, audit that becomes a template for what's possible, um, for other departments, possibly for some equity training? And, and we talked about all kinds of possibilities and, uh, also ultimately came to, uh, the conclusion that it was really the beginning of a conversation, not to be punctuated today with a period, but, but really a comma and a dot-dot-dot. And I just wanted to bring that to the forefront and, uh, air some of our conversation in the light of day. One, to applaud you for how open you are and to thank you for that. Um, but two, to get it on the record that these are the beginnings of conversations that I, I know that you want to have. So not that you're being forced to have them, but to thank you for your willingness to have them, and to just maybe talk about a little bit from your perspective, some of what we did discuss over the weekend in, in that regard to, um, equity and inclusion training or an audit, or whatever it may be, um, to talk about best practices moving forward and to highlight some of the great stuff you're already doing. And perhaps define areas where we could improve. So, thank you.
Yeah, my, my pleasure. And, um, and just to highlight, uh, some of that conversation, um, you know, we talked about, uh, possibly pursuing or exploring a, uh, consultant to look at some of our, uh, uh, police practices with respect to, uh, recruiting, uh, career development, and, uh, overall, um, overall training of our police department. Um, we currently have several areas, uh, that we train in, uh, specifically police and the public, uh, cultural awareness and diversity, uh, fair and impartial policing, and hate and bias crime. Um, and those are, um, you know, also highlighted in the Police Accountability Act. Um, and, um, you know, we would, we would definitively consider having that conversation as we go forward. I know, like you said, you know, the, the, the budget was already proposed, and, uh, we, we are open and welcoming to, uh, any type of, uh, someone coming in and, and, and looking at our practices and looking for ways to improve. So, so, uh, yeah, it was, it was great to have that conversation, and I'm open to it, so.
Thank you again.
Are there any further questions, um, on that, on the, the police budget?
I don't have any right now, thank you.
Neither do I, thank you.
Uh, Ben, we'll go on to the emergency communication center, and, uh, this is Chief Calamaris again as well.
It's page one ninety.
It's page one ninety.
Yep. Go ahead, Chief. If you don't mind.
Yeah, you're gonna see, um, uh, we're kind of, we're kind of between, between two places here, um, and, and you're gonna see two big drivers, um, under, uh, fees and professional services, and you're gonna see, uh, another driver under communications.
As well as utilities. Electric. There's three of them.
There was a, uh, an updated number that we got after looking closer at the utilities number. I think the, uh, police department had a conversation with some other, um, other dispatch centers to find out how much they were spending, and so this number reflects the, uh, you know, other areas, our, our number, uh, but based off of what the experience is in other centers.
So, okay, so the sixty-two thousand four hundred, that's up from twenty-five thousand, which was approved last year, is based on discussions with other towns that have facilities of similar size. So you revise the estimate of what the utilities expense is gonna be going forward? Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
So are these numbers that we're seeing here, fees, professional service? I have two questions. The fees, professional services, utilities, and electric, I think I know the answer to, and communications. Are these ongoing expenses that are gonna move forward? These are not one-time in nature?
The answer to that is correct.
So these are much larger than what was estimated last year. Um, I'd love to understand why. And the second thing is, uh, Jared, we just went through the operating, uh, costs for the new ECC, um, when we approved the additional million dollars last week. Um, were these the numbers that were reflected in that go-forward kind of operating assumptions?
Yes, these are the same numbers.
Okay.
And, uh, some, yes, I can answer some of the, some of your questions, uh, broadly. Um, and part of this is due to more accurately reflecting what line item some of the costs are carried in. So you'll see that some of them have, uh, were, were indifferent. You, you probably can't see it from this document, but, um, we did move some of the costs around between different line items so that they're, uh, just more accurately characterized. And I believe-
I can't, I can't see that, yeah, I can't see that anywhere in here.
Right.
So where were they before?
So, there were costs in, uh, communications. There was an in- increase there. There was-
Yeah, I'm not seeing the cor- yeah, I'm not seeing the corresponding decrease, is what I'm saying.
It's an increase when we went further along.
Yeah. Um, and some of it is just in, you may not see a corresponding decrease. You may just see increase because that's, that's what happened, the, the operating budget increased. So, uh, not that you would see a corresponding decrease, but that, uh, that some of the costs were shifted to different, uh, different line items.
So, so Chief, did we just mess up the budget for this last year?
Uh, well, there was some projected costs with related to the, the emergency communication center that were, you, you know, it wasn't built yet. Um, the, the driver for the new center is the, uh, maintenance for the new center radio consoles, which, uh, specifically is a, is a significant increase.
Is that a, is that a maintenance contract as opposed to repairs, or what is that?
Yes, it's a, the maintenance contract.
Did we swap, we swapped out the console that we were gonna get and got a, got a different console, and it just comes with more, uh, more cost? Is that what happened?
Oh, well, the initial, uh, build of the ECC was three years ago. So you're looking at different costs related to inflation over the, over the three-year span that it was, uh, budgeted for previously.
Yeah, I don't, I, I'm, I'm not trying to be hard, I'm trying to understand, so my apologies. I don't, these, these costs have almost, and then they've doubled, right? Essentially, so I don't know that it's just three years of inflation. You, you know what I'm saying? When I look at fees and professional services and communications, these costs are double what they were last year.
That's learning system, it's not in there.
Well, you know what? We could, maybe we provide you with the backup that, uh, was included in the, in the board meeting last week, uh, because that goes into detail about what's behind each one of these numbers. That's probably the best way to do this.
Yeah, I'd, I'd appreciate that. I just want to under, here, here's my, um, he, he, here's my thought on this. I know that this ECC, to, to Chief's point, it's been under development for three, four years or what have you. A lot of the estimates were done quite some time ago. There's been a lot of changes to this project, including the location on the campus, so I get all that. I'm just trying to understand what our go-forward run rate costs are. Um, because when we looked at this, we, we were basically looking that it was a, a little bit, um, of cost savings when it was us combined with Trumbull. It was almost, it was pretty cost-neutral. Um, I think we saved like sixty thousand dollars a year under the latest projections. Uh, and then we have the opportunity for more significant cost savings by rolling in other towns. So I get that. I just want to know at this point, given kind of the overrun and the build-out and given the changes here in the budget, that we've got a firm grasp on the operating costs here going forward. So I'm not, again, not trying to be difficult, I'm trying to understand and make sure I, I get it. You know what I mean?
And these are, these operating costs that you see here will, will roll forward. Um, and as I mentioned during the, during the Board of Selectmen meeting, there are a couple of, a couple of caveats, which include some kind of increase in salary because this contract expired in twenty-nineteen, so-
Right.
-those will be reflected in any budget going forward, once that's settled. In addition to that, there's gonna be probably somewhere around ninety thousand dollars in ongoing expenses as a result of the, um, costs required for licenses, software, uh, other IT-related items. So that, that would be, you'd expect to see, uh, that adding to this in, probably starting in twenty, in FY twenty-three.
Great.
All right.
I don't have any questions here, but thank you, Tom, for yours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no further questions on this item, we're gonna move to the fire, uh, budget with, uh, Chief McCarthy and Karen Dunn.
And, and by the way, to the police, uh, department, thank you very much. And Chief, um, congratulations, I actually haven't seen you live, and, and best of luck in the new role. I'm sure you're gonna do great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Jonathan Crapie from the Fire Department, and Deputy Chief Karen Dunn, uh, is here with me. I just want to recognize, uh, Chief Dunn's work on, uh, the budget preparation and his management of the budget over the course of the year. Uh, certainly couldn't do it without him. Um, there are three, as you see on page one seventy, uh, the last line of the budget, uh, is a one-point-four-nine percent increase. Uh, this budget does not include salary increases for, uh, fiscal year twenty-two as the contract expires this June thirty, uh, thirty-first. Uh, there are three main drivers of the increase, uh, in the budget, and let me point them out. Um, the training budget is, uh, projected to increase by sixty thousand dollars. Uh, as you know, uh, or may know, uh, we have a number of employees that are, um, eligible for retirement after a thirty-year service, uh, come this July, and we're anticipating that, uh, four positions that will be filled, uh, for which we need to send, uh, recruits to the Fire Academy. Uh, so we project, uh, those increases based on, uh, the best estimate that we have of any changeover in staff. Uh, so we wanted to make sure that we included inadequate funding, uh, for the recruit training, um, uh, that is fourteen weeks at the Connecticut Fire Academy. Uh, there's two other, uh, larger increases in the budget. Uh, the capital budget, uh, has increased by forty-seven thousand dollars. Um, and, uh, we had added a staff car in last year's budget, uh, which, uh, did not survive the process. Uh, we added it in again this year. Uh, we continue, um, just by way of background, um, as we replace cars, uh, the oldest in the fleet, uh, six staff cars that are used every day, uh, gets retired or moved on, uh, to some standby service or is surplus. Uh, we still maintain several Crown Victorias, uh, of Police Department vintage, uh, that, uh, if we're successful in, uh, this budget request, uh, that, uh, Crown Vic, uh, as their early two thousands vintage, uh, will be retired. And lastly, um, the budget reflects the increase of a fire inspector. As you may recall, we had quite a bit of discussion last year. Uh, the Fire Department had requested two additional fire inspectors. Um, and, uh, during the budget process, uh, we focused on replacing one of those positions, and it, uh, survived fairly deep into the budget process, but was, uh, ultimately not funded. Um, in conversations, uh, that we've had since then, uh, we have provided, uh, significant amount of justification for, uh, the, uh, addition of one fire inspector. Uh, as you recall, uh, the Fire Department revenue back in twenty-seventeen, twenty-sixteen, seventeen was twenty-three thousand dollars a year. We finished last year with a budget revenue of six-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars. Uh, Mr. Flynn, uh, you may recall, we had quite a bit of discussion last year about what was the appropriate number for revenue this year, uh, and, uh, we ended up, uh, uh, with a, a revenue projection of five-hundred thousand. Uh, given the circumstances of COVID and, uh, the business downturn, uh, we're projecting, uh, four-hundred thousand dollars in revenue in fiscal year, uh, the current fiscal year, and have projected that, uh, for, uh, next year. So we went from twenty-sixteen at twenty-three thousand dollars a year, uh, to where we are today with projection for this year and next year at four-hundred thousand dollars. And that was specifically intended to offset the cost of increasing staffing in the Fire Marshal's Office. So those are the main, uh, larger increases. There's a lot of zeros, uh, in the budget, uh, zero increases. Um, we've, you know, worked hard to, uh, maintain flat funding for much of our work, um, and, uh, have only added those increases where that's, where necessary. And with that, I'll pause, uh, for questions.
Chief, it's, it's Tom, thanks for the discussion points. Still think you're sandbagging on your revenue number for next year, but that's okay. I understand. Uh, quick question for you. Say it again, say it again.
You're calling the conservatives.
I know. A cou- a couple of points on the, um, on your salary lines. So I definitely see the training line, and I understand that. I saw that vacation, uh, relief went up to like a historic level. Why, why is that?
So this is, uh, as a result of, as our employees, you know, because we have tended to hire in groups or batches, uh, those employees age through the system or progress through the system, um, and reach, uh, certain, um, anniversaries in which additional benefits are accrued. Uh, so we had a number of employees that reached either twenty years or twenty-five years, uh, that gave them a significant bump in the number of vacation days that they're eligible for. Uh, so each one of the, uh, the days, and the deputy chief spends quite a bit of time tracking, uh, those changes year over year, uh, so they are absolutely, um, equal to eligibility. Um, and that eligibility, uh, increased, uh, is projected to increase next year.
So that means the number of hours they can take off due to their longevity, uh, increases. So, so here's my, here's my question here, though. Um, have you factored in the savings of hiring, uh, less experienced firefighters? And by that, I mean, you know, people are, are retiring. Uh, you've covered the fact that you're gonna hire new people, and they're gonna have to be trained. I would imagine those new people start at a lower rate. Is that factored into your budget?
So, uh, not, uh, not exactly. Uh, and the reason why is we can't project exactly when, uh, those superannuated employees might retire. Um, it could be on July first, it could be on January first, and the difference would be, uh, if they retired on July first, uh, we're carrying a replacement until December. And the difference would be that if they retired on July 1st, uh, we're carrying a replacement until December, uh, in which the recruits come back from the Fire Academy. Uh, if they retire on January 1st, uh, we are not getting a full-time replacement, uh, filling that slot, uh, until, um, May, end of May, early June.
So what is?
Almost a full year of, uh, not getting the reduction in costs, uh, where, uh, we will have the increase in costs of sending the employees to the academy, uh, without the offsetting savings. And so sometime after they, uh, graduate from the academy.
I understand what you just said. I don't understand how it was factored into the budget, kind of how it was laid out. I, y- your, your point makes sense in terms of the, the amount of time, but I'm seeing, on one hand, you're saying the vacation accrual is going up, uh, because there's, you've got a more tenured force, let's put it like that. So they're earning more vacation time. On the other hand, you're saying we're having a lot of people that are going to retire. So our training and backfill is going to need to be done and we're going to have to send them to the academy. It's kind of, it's, I, the story's not flowing for me, um, in the numbers.
There are a couple of guarantees, and I know that Jared's going to come up and speak, uh, a couple of guarantees. The guarantee is, um, that, uh, you know, on July 1st, I have a vacation, uh, exposure for those, uh, tenured employees. And if, uh, on, on July 1st, they accrue, they're accruing that vacation this year, they're eligible to take that vacation or be, uh, recompensed for it on July 1st. If they, uh, retire after July 1st, I still have that vacation exposure for that fiscal year.
So if they're, if they're accruing, yeah, but if they're earning it this year, it should be an expense for this year, not an expense for next year. Chart already be accounted for.
It, it's paid out of next year's budget.
Yeah, no, I understand the payment. That's not the, the proper accounting is it's earned this year, so it should be accrued this year. So, um, and I know you're not an accountant, chief. I'm not questioning you, um, on that.
And the other, so the, uh, so that is a, a known. The unknown is the date in which those tenured employees could retire. And, um, we have to, uh, anticipate and put a, uh,
So, so what's the assumption? Yeah. What's the assumption?
Okay, four positions will be changed sometime. Four, four new hires will be made either on September 1st or on February 1st.
So what is the budget presume?
It presumes four positions, uh, for the entire year, uh, four positions for the academy.
When does it presume the people will be leaving though? You don't, do you just have them completely?
I, I don't get that level of detail.
Right, it sounds like it's, a- and I will say this, it sounds like on these payroll lines, you're a little bit conservative, uh, on these payroll lines, because it sounds like you have the four people. Here's, here's what I'm hearing. You have the four people in there for the entire year. And you have, um, four people going to the academy at some point in the year.
I am, what, what is represented is four people at the academy for 16 weeks. It's not four additional people for the entire year.
Understood, yeah.
Double costs for those 16 weeks or 14 weeks, uh, that they're at the academy. So I'm not double counting, uh, those, except for that period of time.
I understand that. I think where you're double counting is you have the, um, uh, the costs of the, the retirees are in there for the full year. So we're not seeing any of the salary benefit of them retiring. But yet you have the additional cost, um, reflected of four people going to the academy, um, which there should be somewhat of an offset there, right? And in fact, you also are carrying the entire vacation complement, probably including those four people. That is probably also a little bit overstated, um, for that period of time. And I get that you don't have any, um, they could go on July 1st. I'm assuming they could also go on September 30th. I'm assuming they can go, once they hit that age, right? They can turn in their papers at any time. Is that kind of the way it works?
Yep.
Okay.
So Mr. Flynn, aside from, aside from the timing issue, we have included an offset for bringing in new, uh, new firefighters at a lower level. So that, that is a kind, and there are obviously a number of, number of line items there related to salary. But there is, uh, built into there a decrease in salary as a result of bringing, bringing in new, uh, new firefighters at a lower level.
Great, can I see that when we get a chance, not during this meeting, but can you follow back up with a, with the, the detail behind that, just so that I understand that a little bit? I just want to make sure I get it.
Yep, we can do that.
Thank you so much.
Hello.
Hey.
Tom, did you have something else you wanted to?
No, thanks, Nia. I monopolized the conversation enough.
No, that's okay. Uh, informative questions and subsequent answers. And Chief McCarthy, thank you so much for everything you've done. Um, we need to start writing new words to say thank you, invent new language for it, because you and your team and the emergency management team have gone, uh, above and beyond. And, um, thank you so much, really. It's, uh, your work has been incredible this past year, which certainly has been extraordinary. It's become contrived to say, uh, again, this year looks.
Team, thank you.
Very good team.
And we're, we're all very, um, proud to be able to support Ken Cleary in the Health Department, uh, who has led this effort. So, uh, I will certainly share your comments with the team, but it has been a team approach.
Yeah, well, thank you. And, um, with your leadership, certainly it's, it's been noticed. So thank you. Um, and again, going into the spaces in between these line items, and I appreciate Mr. Flynn's questions and your subsequent answers and the ones that are forthcoming. Um, and again, I reiterate something I, I will reiterate throughout these next two days, um, and certainly, um, with Mr. Hipson. But something we've talked about, looking at who and how we hire, um, new recruits in 2021. I imagine it should look different than it has in years past. And I do have a question about, um, that recruitment and I hope that we'll have a conversation another day. I'm, I'm supportive of what is here, the line items here. Um, but as I, the discussion I had with, um, Chief Calomaros, I hope that, uh, in 2021, if it, it has not been, um, part of the way, uh, new recruits are, um, if there's a look towards inclusion and diversity, and I, I, I believe in your words and actions, that is something that you, you do look to address and, um, have it as a priority. So I just mostly want to point it out as a comment and a, and a statement and something I'm looking forward to in 2021. Um, and just wanted to either get your thoughts or, or just have you, you know, acknowledge here what you have to say on that.
So I, in my employment interview in 2025, uh, uh, this was certainly an area of, uh, discussion that I had with the Board of Fire Commissioners and have pursued since then. Um, the Fairfield Fire Department, uh, as many suburban fire departments in the state of Connecticut need to do a better job in, uh, recruiting a diverse candidate pool, uh, for gender and race. And we have, as a result of, uh, those discussions, uh, developed a statewide testing process. So we're recruiting not only from suburban volunteer fire departments, which have been, um, the candidate pool, uh, historically.
Sorry, could someone mute their phone because you're being, sorry, whoever's not speaking, I can't hear what Chief McCarthy has to say. Thank you, sorry, sorry.
So, uh, we have, uh, we have, uh, initiated a statewide testing process. So our candidate pool is coming not only from, uh, suburban and volunteer fire departments, but also from urban areas. Uh, and, and in particular, uh, seeking female candidates, uh, for, uh, positions in the Fire Department. Um, I can tell you that, uh, that is not an easy lift. Uh, it, uh, we have been less successful than our counterparts in the Police Department. Uh, we have explored a number of obstacles, uh, from EMT certification to the fiscal abilities test and the investment that a candidate would need to make financially, uh, to get time off and to pay for some of those, um, uh, prerequisites for the position, uh, and continue to work, uh, and actually are, uh, attempting to work through the firing EMS package that the state legislature, uh, to help, uh, change some of those structural barriers, uh, for candidates of color and female candidates who traditionally, uh, did have not applied for firefighting positions. But it is an area that we continue to work at, um, and struggle with, quite honestly.
I appreciate your candor and some of the good work in this area that you're already making and, and appreciate the, the complicated barriers to entry. And, and thank you so much for your focus and attention to this for a more inclusive department where, where possible. So thank you very much, really appreciate it.
Hey, chief, I've got one more question if I might. Um, going back to your revenue line item, d- did I hear you say that this year you're going to come in at $400,000?
That's what we're projecting, yes.
So why wouldn't you come in more next year?
So a couple of the very large drivers of that increase, um, and you may have heard that, uh, we, uh, were struggling to, um, evaluate, uh, whether some of those large projects that both university, one at each university would come to pass, uh, in this fiscal year. Um, and, uh, I lowballed the projection, uh, or sandbagged, uh, uh, the projection, um, uh, in the first quarter, we revised it to $400,000 after extensive conversations with Jim Went and Tom Conley in particular, uh, with our Fire Marshal. Um, because they are so large, uh, they are tipping the scales, uh, that bring us back up to $400,000 this, this year. Uh, some of the projects that are untapped that, uh, may come, uh, to permit, um, and a fee in the next fiscal year don't, uh, equal the size of scope or, uh, the cost. Uh, so we are, again, being conservative, uh, in our approach, uh, to revenue just because the two university projects, uh, won't, uh, generate any, any, any university projects, uh, are not untapped, uh, to, uh, fill that gap next year.
So the, the, the skating arena isn't next year, it'd be the year after, um,
This year. That's the skating arena. And so the Convocation Center at Griffith University and the hockey rink at Sacred Park, uh, will come in this year. There are a number of projects next year, mostly residential, uh, 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 affordable housing projects. Uh, while they will generate significant re- revenue, nowhere near the, uh, size of, uh, the revenue, uh, coming from both universities this year.
Did you coordinate this $400,000 with the building department?
Yep.
Th- this year?
Yep. So that was a conversation that we had after the quarterly meeting with the Board of Finance, uh, the first quarter. Uh, we reconciled that, uh, looked at some of the increases. We are at, uh, just over $125,000 year to date. Uh, but with those two large projects coming in, uh, we expect to make the $400,000 a revised projection.
Got it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I have no further questions.
I have one other, I have one other budget, the fire school, the regional fire school, uh, is next up, um, and, uh,
What's the page on that one? You don't mind? That's the in and out. I think it's under self-supporting, isn't it? It is, page 283.
This is the, 283. So the, uh, this budget is driven by revenue. It comes from three sources, H Connecticut, uh, which, uh, we received, uh, or is a governor's budget, shows, uh, flat funding for the regional fire schools at $70,000. Um, the, uh, fees that are offset the cost of running the facility and the Fairfield Fire Department training at that facility at $25,000. And, uh, because we anticipate far more, uh, training and requests for training, uh, that will generate fees from non-Fairfield Fire Department, uh, firefighters. Uh, our revenue will go up, uh, from $75,000 this year to over $91,000 next year. Uh, so our budget increase is specifically related to the increase in, um, with no change in the town of Fairfield's support of the regional fire school.
Yep. Basically, it's a wash.
It is. Yep, uh, fees equal cost of the instructors that we hire to provide the training.
Right. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Madam First Selectwoman, I think we forgot animal control unless that's done outside the police department as well as, um, I don't remember whether the, the streetlights and that is separate as well. I, I can't recall.
Yeah. Mark Cilio's doing the streetlights. Um, I just want to mention, uh, before the chief leaves, the, those, those revenue, uh, those revenues for last year that were incorporated in this year's budget, obviously due to a lot of projects. But I think what needs to be noted is that, um, we, we charge of frontal, we front charge everybody who uses our services for permitting, but they continue to get the service throughout the life of the building or the project or whatever. So even though that those fees were, uh, higher last year, we still have to provide a service, uh, all along, which is the reason why the Fire Marshal is more, is so important, because we're really delayed in giving service to the people who did pay those upfront costs and do expect, not just because of life safety, which is obviously huge issue, but also it's, uh, something they paid for and they are expecting to have that service and the inspections done in a timely fashion.
Great.
You're right about animal control, um, hmm. Did, uh, did, did, uh, I think Chief Calomar did, um, sign off, or no, he's still there?
Animal control.
Are you still there?
400.
I'm still here.
I'm sorry, I don't think we, um, we may have inadvertently left it off the list. But would you mind, um, talking about that?
3,000, I think.
Sure. Um, And refer to the page, I'm sorry.
It's 181 and the big issue is overtime earnings.
So the, um, overtime earnings, uh, for 2022, we have, uh, additional, we have additional, uh, part-time, um,
Cool.
It, it's based on the projections from last year, which we had, uh, someone out who is, uh, currently, just, just recently came back. Um, that's with the, uh, the additional, uh, increases on the, uh, overtime earnings line.
So how did you cover it with the person that was out, chief?
Yeah, so we had part-time, uh, animal control officers that were trying to cover that, uh, that shift. We had to change around the scheduling for it and, uh, it was, uh, it was pretty complex.
So are you saying this is going back to a more normal, steady state? I mean, because we even, we even budgeted the 3,000 last year. See what I'm saying? It's interesting, we had 1,500, 3,500, then we had 20,632, which as I recall on that one, that one year, we had some incident, I think where a woman had a ton of dogs that we had to take over, um, in animal control, as I recall, is that, is my memory correct?
Uh, that is correct. And, and this specifically is, is more for the, uh, full-time animal control officer, uh, having to augment the, the increase of overtime, because we only have one full-time, uh, animal control officer. And part-time, um, we had a retirement of, um, uh, Bill McDonough. We had a separation of service from, for, uh, Sean, uh, Seaman. And, uh, we have, the full-time officer is now required to, uh, cover those until we, um, until we get it up to speed, so.
Where were they, where are they on this list? Because I see as, as in the budget, you've got the full complement of personnel as compared to prior year. Um, so I'm not see, seeing, once again, it, it goes back to like what we were just talking about, the Fire Department. I'm seeing the increased expense on the overtime, I'm not seeing the savings, uh, if you have vacancies.
Well, we, we currently have, um, we brought back one of them and we currently hired another, uh, part-timer, um,
So if we're. So, if we're back at full staff, maybe we don't need the additional overtime, is what I'm saying?
Well, no, because we have one projected to leave in May.
Projected to leave how? I'm sorry, are they going out on, are they retiring?
When, when we were down-staffed, yep. So, we, we brought back a retiree, Bill McDonough for a few months to get us, to keep us on our feet, and Bill McDonough is planning on leaving in May, back into retirement. So, we brought him back as a part-timer to augment our staff while we had someone out on long-term disability.
Right.
And just, just to jump in, Tom, if you recall, we had the incident and we had, we relieved the part-timer of their duty and the full-time ACR out on medical. So, the chief and I thought it was vitally important that we have full coverage there. So, McDonough came back out of retirement to assist.
Yep.
And then we replaced the part-time person that was relieved with another part-time. We just want to make sure we're fully covered down the animal control.
Yeah, that, A, I support it, B, I understand, and I thought it was handled appropriately, that terrible incident. I'm just questioning really the, if, if we're double-dipping here on the budget, because we are budgeting for full-time staff, yet you're budgeting for a lot of overtime as well. It, it just seems, once again, conservative in nature to have both. If I were to see a dip in regular payroll or part-time payroll, I, I would understand the overtime earnings. I don't, in a steady-state environment, understand that a 400% increase with, with everything else. That, that's where my questioning comes from.
Well, if you, if you look back at the actuals for 2020, you could see that the overtime earnings increase is, you know, 20,632.
But as I recall, I think that was the big, that was the big dog incident, where I thought, I thought that was because we had so many dogs come in in one fail swoop. Now, I might have that wrong, but that's what I thought.
Yep.
Well, you still have to stop the shelter regardless of how many dogs are there, and you still have to do calls. So, I don't think it matters the amount of animals that are there. They still have to be cared for.
Tom, let me take a little closer look into it, and I can, I can get back to you as to reasons for that driver.
No, I appreciate that very much. I just want to make sure we're consistent, that's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, if there's no further questions, Nancy, did you have any?
No, I think it's been covered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next one is the assessor, Ross Murray, and he is, I believe, on the line.
I am.
It's page 147 for everyone.
Hey Brenda, can we, Brenda, can we take a five-minute break?
Um, sure.
All right. Appreciate that.
All right, five-minute break, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay. Fair TV, can you hear me?
Thank you for that, Brenda.
Okay. We're coming back on, so, um, let's just wait for Gary to... Okay, thank you. All right, all right, Mr. Murray, you're up.
I'm here, just closing my door.
What page are we on?
147 and 148.
Thank you.
So, overall, my budget will be down this year, and that's primarily for the, because the revale completed and that those payments are over with for a few years. Standard increase in our IT software, those are contractual obligations. Fees and professional services are down because the revale is done, but there's, we also did increase the anticipated cost for appeals. They're obviously always heavier in the first year or two of a revale, so we've put some extra funds in there. There's also been a change in the judges at the court, and they're now looking for us to come with an appraisal, whereas in the past, we would just, that wasn't required until we were further down the process. Other than that, there's just fairly minor changes. So, any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I do have some questions. And Ross, I want to thank you for your time a couple weeks ago. I know it's been extraordinarily busy time. I, I see the reduction, you know, in salaries, or in, in salaries and staff. With everything that's coming down the line, I understand now there's, if we could spell this out, two, two of your five employees now this year opted in for the Verit Plan. Is that correct?
You were breaking up quite a bit there, but I, I think you were asking that, yes, I had two employees that took the early retirement package and left at the end of December.
And so, what does that do in light of like senior tax relief and the assessments and the, you know, the re, the appeals and whatnot, the 350 million in appeals? What's that going to do to the workload in your office?
Yeah, workload is tremendous. Yeah, the workload is tremendous right now. We've gotten all the appeals scheduled, and hearings will start tomorrow, and we're just doing the final prep for that. A couple of members of the Board of Assessment Appeals are actually here right now, just reviewing the setup space. Fortunately, on the elderly, the governor issued a waiver so that the people that would normally reapply this year can continue at the same level of benefits for another two years. It's the same as, that was issued last year. So, those people, for the most part, won't have to come in. We, we will still have some come in. We'll have new applicants, and if somebody had to drop an income, they may come in, but the, the volume from that is going to be greatly reduced.
Okay. But you did just say, so how will you be able to, will you be able to make up the difference in terms of the workload? And, and maybe that is more part of the organization plan, but...
Yeah. We are looking to reorganize and maybe, you know, rewrite our job description before those positions are filled, but I would like to get them filled as soon as possible, obviously.
It's just not reflected here.
I just want to jump in and say that we were, we've had staff from other departments go over and assist Ross during, when all the appeals were coming in, to make sure everything was handled professionally and efficiently. So, there was no gap there. Everything was handled. And Ross wants, wants to rewrite, working with HR to rewrite one of the job descriptions to have it reflect, to have some assessor qualities as an assessor information or skills as opposed to just a separate carry A position.
Is, is this something perhaps that's in the reorg plan? I know you alluded to the fact that you would, would have a separate meeting for us about this, but I, okay, because I think here's a great example of where that would be helpful, because I see this and feel nervous that, you know, this very important work in Ross's department, in your department, Ross, is somehow not going to be covered. I hear it's being covered with other staff members, but it would be great to see how that fits in in the overall plan. So, thank you.
Don't be nervous, Nancy. We obviously will make, we have made sure, we put controls in place that everything is handled appropriately in the absence of the retiree. And again, the appeals process has been handled seamlessly. There has been absolutely no gap or any issues. Everyone who wanted to file an appeal had their appeal paperwork processed, and the VAA is pushing along. So, we're doing, we're doing fine.
Okay, thank you. And then a couple more questions, if I may, or Tom, do you want to jump in, or should I finish? I have two more questions.
Go for it.
On average, Ross, how much do you anticipate with this new budget that homeowners can expect percentage-wise for, in taxes?
I, I don't estimate the taxes.
From this, okay.
That, you know, the, the tax increase would be based on what the final budget is and the mill rate and what the grand list is after the, after the VAA appeals. So, I don't particularly, I don't look at taxes.
The grand list growth, how much of that is actual new growth versus redistribution? Is that a number you?
I don't have that number. Andy, I could probably, I, I could, I could come up with something for you.
Okay, that would be, would be great. I was just, and then I want to try to reframe, given what the question asked previously, because I didn't ask exactly what I'm trying to get at or trying to understand. So, Tom, if you want to jump in, and then I'll come back, because I, I know what I'm, the answer I'm trying to get to, but I didn't ask the question in the right way.
Okay.
Okay.
So, Ross, first of all, thanks for being here, and particularly during a very, very fast-paced time, busy time. And as I look at your budget, I see that it's, remains constant at seven people. So, the goal here is by July 1st, because we have to remember that this budget is for July 1st forward, to be at a full complement of staff, including an additional set of hands that has more of an assessor background as opposed to just clerical. Is that correct?
It wouldn't be an additional person. It would be one of the, you know, a rewriting of one of the current job descriptions.
Right. The flat, the staff remains flat, but additional in terms of with an additional assessor's background versus just clerical?
Right. There'd be a little more analytics involved in that, in that revised position.
Right. And that's by January 1st, or rather by July 1st. So, by July 1st, the goal is to be back at your full complement of staff with a reorg structure that supports more of the assessor's essential duties.
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
Now, going back to your budget as a whole, I'm noticing a few things. You talked about the IT software. Fees and professional services, you've cut it roughly in half from the prior year. Obviously, the prior year, we had the second half of the assessment process. Why is half, why is 125 the right number? Where did you get that number?
125 being the half of the evaluation.
Fees and professional service. Well, no. My apologies. The revaluation we, we put in last year, and that's the 251 number, correct?
Right, correct.
Okay. So, now you're back down, you've cut that in half to 125. Why is 125 the right number?
Well, it wasn't an even 50/50 split, if I remember correctly.
I understand, but I'm, I'm just saying it, it's about, I, I'm not going to get involved as to whether it's 50.5%, 51%, whatever. Just why is 125/7 the right number?
I, I don't know where you're, where is the 125/7 coming from?
In, in the fees and professional services, line 53200.
Yep.
Your, your fees and professional, go ahead.
Ross, and maybe you can fill in the blanks here, but that's the total of the contract that are within there, which also includes additional funding, as Ross pointed out in the beginning, for appraisals that are going to be required during these, these appeals.
Right. What's the majority of that? I mean, why's, I understand the nomenclature. I'm trying to get to why is 125/7 the right number? Why is it not 1?
I can break that down.
Please.
I, I can break that down. I, I understand. I was looking at the, at a wrong figure. So, it breaks down, we have 40,000 budgeted for personal property audits. That's on the, the personal property declarations that are filed by businesses. 60,000 is budgeted for appeal work. So, this would be once they go to Superior Court and the cost for our appraisals and any outside services other than the actual legal fees. Right. I put in $15,000 for, to finish up the planometric update, which is trying to eliminate our Mylar maps, which are hand-drawn still. And so, we're trying to move away from hand-drawn and have a entirely GIS-based map system.
Got it.
Beyond that, there are a couple of small items, $2,000, and those are more recurring costs for pricing guides and Marshall and Swift, which is a cost book for residential and commercial property.
Got it. What's going on with overtime earnings? Why is that up so much? Why is it even there?
Well, this is going to help us next year to finish the, to wrap up inspections on permits. Because, you know, as my staff has been rejockeyed to help with the volume due to the retirements, I'm anticipating we'll need some overtime next year to wrap up the, the permits that come through, which is a substantial number every year.
Okay. And what about the, what's going on with travel and meetings and education and membership? We're not talking to high dollars, but high percentage increases there. What's going on?
Well, we have, with two new people, we'll, we will need to bring them some training and get them to training so that they're up to speed.
Got it.
And that was the reason for that increase.
Can we then go, I, since I have you here, can we go and look at revenue a little bit? Nancy, do you want to go back to anything before we go to revenue?
Yeah, I mean, for me, the confusing piece, I guess, is, and here's the rub, it's always a little, I think it's confusing for, for most people. It goes back to this idea of the, why I asked the question about the tax increases, because again, the number of 1.98% is the mill rate number versus the tax increase number. And I just think it'd be really important, because a lot of people don't understand what that is. So, when I ask the question about what you think the tax increase is, again, when I open my bill, I'm not going to be seeing a 1.98% increase. That mill rate number will be there, but, you know, so I, I just think it's important to, one, clarify that and, and how some new construction may, you know, might offset that, but like the grand list and how that ties in. I just think this is an opportunity for people to really understand, because I know the headline was, this will be the tax increase, but it's not exactly, you know, if I'm confused about it, believe me, there are many, many, many others who are as well.
So, in a re, in a revaluation, normally in a budget cycle, you can take the, you know, the projected budget increase and say that's going to be your, your tax increase in general. There is some grand list growth, but it's usually much smaller. This year, of course, you know, you have assessments going up and down throughout town. So, you, there's no, you can't generalize what the increase will be. So, you can...
It's very individualized. It's, it's very...
Now that we have, you know, projected mill rate, I'm sorry?
Ross, so what I think Nancy's trying to get at, but it's not different than any other year, Nancy, or even any other year when we had a revale. You know, some people's taxes will go off because of their revaluation, but it's all based on the percentage that ends up passing throughout the town bodies. And this is where the Board of Finance comes into play much more strongly, because they, they're the ones who really scrutinize the revenues and all of these numbers, and then they can change the mill rate at the end of their process. So, all of this is speculative and none of those, I mean, this is like it is any other year. You know, that's, this budget raises taxes, if passed untouched, 1.98%. But I think people are fairly certain, understand that, you know, their taxes are, are based on their assessment. So, that means, you know, if your assessment is low, it's not going to go off as much, but if your assessment is high, that, you know, that probably is going to go up. But the Board of Finance is going to look more closely at those numbers, and they're going to be talking about potentially changing the mill rate due to the growth that we had during this revale. So, that's actually a possibility.
And, and can we, can you, Ross, talk about that growth, what you attribute it to? Is it, as I started to ask, is it, can you talk about where that number comes from? How much of it is, is new versus reassessed and? How much of it is, is new versus reassessed and?
Yeah, I'd have to get the number for new. Uh, I don't have that broken out or handy at the moment. I, I can get that and get, get that to you at a later date. Um, but most of it is from, you know, what's happened over the last five years. You know, growth in, in value in the town. And it's not just from the last year. It's, you know, there's areas of town that have grown steadily over the past five years. There's areas of the town that have decreased, um, over the last five years and did rebound a bit in the last year. So it's, um, it depends on where you are in town as to what, um, what change happened for you. But overall, the grand list is up four and about four and a half percent.
And again, I think it, it is significant in a non, where this becomes, is, you know, this has been a reeval year. So I would love to get that number before next Monday, just as we're making determinations. If that's possible, please, if, just to, again, to better understand where it fits in. Um, and then there's a, um, in the, the Board of Assessment Appeals line, the reduction of, of 25 million. Can you just talk about that?
Um, I think Jared might be better to speak to that.
Okay. Thank you, Ross, I appreciate you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so for background, this, uh, this number represents what will happen, uh, or protection of what will happen after the appeal process and how much the decrease, uh, how much the property value will be decreased overall after that. So the Board of Assessment Appeals goes through and decides that, you know, you're right about this property, we should reduce the value by X amount. And so that's what this number represents after the appeals process, the amount of reduction in grand list value that will happen. The number is based on, uh, we went back to, really the, the best corollary was 2010, to look at the 2010 situation, because it wa, it had the, the closest number of appeal applications, uh, compared to what happened this year. In terms of residential, it was at 500, about 550 in 2010. This year, the residential was, uh, four, I want to say 470-ish. Um, and so we did, just under, thank you. And so what we did was took the, uh, the amount of property value reduction that we saw in 2010 and applied that to what's, what we saw, what we're seeing this year and what the total value of the application, the people who have applied for an appeal, um, and took that value and applied that same percentage, uh, to this year. And so that's where that comes from. We add, uh, to be honest, we added a, a little bit of a cushion there, um, of probably about three million, I believe about $3 million to that, um, just because this is a very, it's a different year. And the value of those properties is, uh, could be, uh, potentially really high.
And that, don't the taxpayers have to absorb that then?
That's factored into the overall tax rate. They do, it, it, it's factored into the final tax rate.
Okay.
All right, um, can we go to page three in the budget book? Uh, hopefully you have the budget book, Ross, or can access it. It's the, uh, I like to refer to this as the Picasso page. It's the budget and tax rate projection. Can you get to that?
I'm looking for it.
Cool.
Okay.
Great, so I'm going to go through a series of numbers here. I just want to get, obviously, the, the, the budget here is all dependent on the fact that we're reasonably comfortable with a, with the tax rate. Reasonably comfortable with, um, the assessment work that's been done to date. So I'm not going to go to any great amount of detail, and I also know that you have an appeal process going on and you're in the midst of a lot and, um, but I did want to touch on a few topics here. Uh, number one, let's start with the plus credits to taxpayers. Are you comfortable with the amounts that are in here for the senior and disabled tax relief amounts?
Yes, those numbers don't tend to change very much year to year.
Well, they, we did have a big change in our number this year of about 511. Is that within your projection of what the new senior and disabled tax relief program is going to, the impact will be?
Yeah, I think, um, have Jared speak to that?
Well, I want to hear from you, because you're, you were involved on that committee and all that, right?
Right, um, but I didn't put the, I wasn't involved with the budget number.
Okay, Jared, uh, can you speak to that then?
Sure. So we, yes, we did add 500,000 to account for the change in the, uh, senior and disabled property tax credit.
Now, when the committee got together, they actually came up with a number that they thought that might be, did they not? And Ross, you were part of that, were you not?
Yes. Yep.
So, so is that within, is that right around that number that you were talking about?
You're looking at the total credit number, the 4.92?
I'm looking at the, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, that, or the 3,008, I think that.
The 3,008.
Yeah.
So you were on, you were on the committee.
If we can come back to it, I think I can pull that up.
I, I just want to make sure that we've got comfort on that number. Assessment appeals, um, Jared, you put that together, that's $500,000. We talked about that earlier when we talked about legal. That was put together in concert with your discussions with Ross, is that correct? Sorry?
Uh, yes, but, yes, with Ross and, uh, yes, yes.
Okay, now Ross, and.
And it, and it, uh, took, the analysis was similar to what we did with the assessment appeals and, you know, seeing the increase in the number of, uh, number of applications and applied, uh, a factor there of approximately four times, uh, what it was last year to arrive at that number.
And is that, where does that stand as regards to, um, historical, last time value, evaluation, and things of the like?
Uh, that's a good question. We can, uh, we can probably, we can look into that and get a, a better sense of it.
Yeah, um, the assessor's grand list as of January 31st. Ross, this is the number that you have, correct? So we're starting from the same point?
Yeah, I mean, I provide those numbers to, um, finance through Linda and I'll pull my grand list out, but I'm sure they're.
I just want to make sure, because these are the questions that you're going to get throughout the town bodies.
11-579-988, is that's the, that's the correct number?
Yep, that's the net number, thank you. We talked about the 25 million being an estimate. And then you get, you get down to the 11-554. Motor vehicle, 84,00651-475, that sound right?
Sounds right.
Okay, now, quick question for you. The firm you used wa, was done through a bid process, and it's a totally independent firm from the town, correct?
Correct.
They come up with their, they work with you, your team records, as well as information available, uh, for related, uh, real estate transactions throughout the town, correct?
Right, we work together.
Okay, but is it their independent view of what the assessment is of the properties? Based on information.
For the most part, I mean, we, we, we work together on the final numbers, but they develop the, the pricing model that ultimately values each house.
Now, once you do that, I, I said something earlier, I want to make sure I said it the right way. Doesn't the, what does the state review? Like, what kind of comfort do we have that the state says, yeah, you follow the process, you follow the guidelines?
Um, the state reviews, uh, we have a filing that goes to them. It includes, um, a listing of all the sales. I'm just going to pull it out here.
Sure.
So there's two methods that you could, um, use to come up with a revaluation. Um, one is a ratio testing method, which is what we used, and that's if you have more than, um, 15 sales. And we obviously had well more than 15. Um, generally, the, the other method is only used in the very small towns where you may not have, um, enough sales. So they look at, um, several ratios, um, and they look at all the sales that we've deemed valid for the revale. And that's what they base their, um, review on.
Now, we're, we, um, has the state come back and said whether the valuation work is quote unquote? I, I don't know the terminology, Ross, is it approved? Is it done in accordance with state? You know, I, I don't know, I'm not a valuation expert.
I, you know, I, I don't recall, uh, quite frankly, what they send back to us. Once we submit it to them, I, I, you know, we've met the standard, so it'll, it'll be some time before they go through that. Obviously, we're not the only town doing a revale this year, so we'll.
Have they come back and, have they come back and said you've met the standard already?
I don't believe so.
So you're waiting on that, what's the timing of that?
Uh, I, I don't know, I'll have to check with, um, OPM and find out.
Got it. If you wouldn't mind, just so that we know, you, you were very definitive in that we met the standard. How, eh, what does that mean? If you don't mind, I just want to make sure I get it.
Well, there's, um, several key ratios, you know, statistical measures that we have to meet, and we met them.
Okay, so, so the paperwork. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Tom, go ahead.
No, go, please, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Yep, um, the only place they could really question us is if they didn't, if they disapproved of some of our sales and they felt that they shouldn't have been included at all, they were invalid. And it, that's pretty unlikely, the sales have been vetted pretty closely. So what's included as a valid sale, um, I'm, I'm very confident is accurate.
So, so you're comfortable with the way this valuation was done?
Yes, and I, I'm very confident that we met the criteria and we sh, we won't have any problems with, um, with OPM.
Okay. All right, and you're comfortable with this schedule as it stands? I know you worked on this with concert with the CFO, in concert with the CFO. I just want to, I don't want to put words in your mouth or anything, I just don't want any problems with our tax revenue.
I believe it's good.
Okay, I appreciate your time, thank you.
You're welcome.
And good luck reorganizing your department, it sounds like it's an opportunity over time.
Yeah, it is, thank you.
I've got nothing further.
All right, for under steps now, is there any other questions?
No, just to say thank you, and I look forward to receiving that information about the grand list, that, that growth and the breakdown, I think that will be really helpful. Again, this is a lot of, uh, there's new, a lot of nuance, and I think a lot of that is lost on the average taxpayer. Um, and that, uh, you know, I think there's more information that'll be forthcoming that I think will be helpful. So thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
All right, next up is the Town Clerk, page 48.
Good afternoon.
Hey, Betsy.
How's everybody?
Good. You're going to, you're sandbagging us on conveyance taxes again, huh?
Well. My crystal ball's a little cloudy this year.
Uh, I couldn't resist.
I know.
Go ahead.
Uh, conveyance this year is off the charts. And I just, I, is it an anomaly? Is it going to continue? Um, right now, people are talking about inventory, and will the inventory still be there?
Yeah, that's what I've been hearing. Do we have the latest figures on what's available, Bets? You know, how many months?
In a couple of months, but I can get something.
Can you? Yeah, can you, please? Yeah.
Yeah, um, right now, I'm at 2.2 million for this fiscal year.
Right, crazy.
And, you know, with the revaluation, the values are up. So, you know, obviously, your prices will be up, but I, I'm hedging my bets for next year.
How did you come up with the number for next year?
Um, I looked at the activity, uh, based on 2019.
Okay, tell me, okay, let me take a look at that. I'm trying to find the actual page with the conveyance here right now.
Yeah, please do, okay, thank you, because I was just texting.
19, thank you. So is your number based on 19, Bets, basically?
Pretty much.
Yeah, it seems a little conservative, wouldn't you think?
Yeah, but I don't know that we're going to hit 2 million two years in a row.
Oh, I'm not, yeah, I get it, I understand what you're saying.
You know, can we go up to 1.9? You know, I'd feel better, you know, at the Board of Finance, have another month under our belts.
So you're at 2.2 now, right?
Yeah, uh-huh, um, as, actually, as of this morning, uh, end of February, I'm at 2.3. Those numbers aren't into munis yet, obviously.
So are you, so are you seeing it in, in both volume and rate?
Yes.
Volume and rate, what if we took the 2019 number? And just factored in the growth and rate and just use 2019 volume?
I'd have to go back in my files, but, yeah, um.
And see where that puts us. And 2019 was kind of a weak year, as I recall too, wasn't it?
I was at 1.876. That's fiscal 19.
Right, so if you're.
20 was 1.9.
Okay, so, so if you were at 1.86, what was the rate different? What, do you know what the rate differential is about?
I'd have to go through my file and grab it.
All right.
I'll get it to you.
Yeah, would it be maybe 4%?
Yeah, I'd have to look.
Well, we know, actually, I mean, the grant list, grand list went up by, over six, or what did it go up by, four? Sorry.
Four.
I don't know, I'd take a look at that, that might be a way to look at it.
Okay.
And just multiply it by that amount and see where it comes out.
Okay.
Sporting licenses aren't a big ticket item, huh, Bets?
We have all the work and we only got a buck on each one.
Oof.
Yes.
What, why, yeah, that's a, that's a funny one.
It's a state, we're the state's agent for sports licenses. Need my recording fees, I get a chunk of that.
Got to love the state taking everything they can.
Absolutely.
All right, yeah.
I'm going to no comment on that one.
Yeah. So says the friend.
Hi, Betsy, thank you for your help. Hey, come on now. We're, we're in Fairfield right now, talking about Fairfield's budget.
I couldn't resist. All right, so that's, so that's revenue. Uh, Nance, do you have any comments, any other comments?
I, I, I really don't, um, thank you, Betsy, for everything you do.
Thank you.
Let's go to, um, your Town Clerk budget, which I think is on 49. Betsy, you just want to speak to the large increases here?
Sure, um, and speaking of the state of Connecticut, we have received guidance through, for election events through mid-June regarding COVID protocols.
Yep.
We don't have any guidance yet on what November is going to look like. If we have to give everybody an absentee ballot application, and it's not due to COVID, it's due to underlying health conditions.
Yep.
We're going to be in the same boat that we were for this past. We're gonna be in the same boat that we were for this past election. And that is why that there are substantial increases in my overtime, printing and postage budgets. Because the state will not be sending out those applications and those ballot packets. It'll come out of my budget.
Quick question for, yeah, no, I, I get that. Should we, my thought here is, and that's postage, that's printing and binding, and that's overtime. Yeah.
Yes.
I know it's not all, I know it's not all. Um, but it's most of the increase, right?
Correct.
Should we move that to contingency? And put it there, and then if you get the guidance, move it into your budget?
Mm-hmm. I'm fine with that.
Okay, would it be the whole, the whole increase, Bets, or what percentage of it?
Well, obviously, I'm going, we have more voters in town.
Sure.
I will have to in, and because we'll have ten ballot styles, my printing bu- budget will increase.
Just period?
Yeah.
Can you um, for, for the record, Tom, suggest why that may be a useful uh opportunity to move it to contingency as opposed to keep it here?
Yeah, and this isn't about, and this isn't about, please don't think it's about Betsy, but what tends to happen um is when you leave anomalies like this in some of these operating budgets, they ti- tend to get lost to time immemorial and just get um renewed each year as part of the budget. Whereas if you put it into contingency, you point out the fact that this was a one-time event, right? And you don't inadvertently, the department head just doesn't take it year after year as, as part of their overall budget. So I would say you put it into contingency and then there has to be a concerted effort when something happens uh to move it into the department. And there, therefore, you have a trail of approval. And then when the crisis or whatever passes, you go back to your normal level of spending uh in the individual department. And again, that's nothing against, you know, or to the town clerk. It's just, we've done this in the past with other departments.
And can we talk about what that process of approval is? And again, separate here from the conversation specifically about the town clerk, um that process for approval that is, doesn't start and stop with the Board of Selectmen.
No, it goes to the Board of Finance.
Right, and so I, I guess the question there, there is, would that be a call for the Board of Finance to make? I mean, I feel, for me, and, and Betsy has said she's, she's fine with it, um I just, if it's a real anticipated cost, then to me, it seems to leave it as an anticipated cost?
Well, anticipated cost is, I, my only point on that is, that's the, that's the, that's the definition of contingency, right? Is you don't know for sure, but it could happen.
Yeah.
You know, which is why she's only got guidance through June. This is November. You don't know. Maybe by July, Bets, you'll know because you'll have the guidance for the November election by then, right? You would hope.
I would hope. But, you know, I think too, it depends on, you know, how many people are vaccinated, you know, the question mark.
Yeah. So if we were to take, just for, if we were to take 3K out of overtime, if we were to take, let's say, um 12K out of printing and binding, and let's say uh 6K out of postage, that would leave you an increases in all those lines, but it would throw the rest into contingency, which is about $21,000.
So I think that, you know, this is something we could talk about a little bit more on.
Yep.
Because I think what, you know, I understand your point of view, Tom, but at the same time, I think if, you know, we, we already have, in my opinion, a government that varies well compared to others uh based on our form of government. And, you know, this is not a huge amount of money and I don't know that we want to have, Betsy, you know, is gonna want to have to go before all the town bodies.
That was my point.
She doesn't have to.
Some sort of, you know, um.
But she doesn't have to.
You know, the things that come up on a daily.
Yeah, no, I get it.
Yeah, and I think that.
She doesn't have to go before the town bodies. Go ahead.
I was just saying, I think that was the point I was making, that it adds a layer of process for something that feels for $21,000 and it's a, and I understand it's the very definition of contingency and it's perhaps a bigger philosophical issue, but one maybe we could dive into for a different line item, if relevant.
True.
And I mean that respectfully to, to all involved in this discussion. I don't mean to dismiss it, I just.
No, I get it.
No, absolutely. I think it's, having a discussion is good.
I don't have any further questions for, for the town clerk.
Do you, Tom? Have any more?
Nope.
All right, well, thank you, Betsy. I think we could have this, you know, potentially when we have our overall budget discussion, um after all the departments are finished, I think we should talk about this a little bit more. Um, you know, just so we can uh, you know, figure out what we think might be best as a body. Um, I'm gonna say that we're at almost 12:30. This is the time I thought would be good for us to take our one-hour uh break. Um, so I'm going to uh announce that I'm gonna take a one-hour break, lunch break, whatever break uh you want to use it for. And Fair TV, uh I guess, could you put something up that is just an hour or something? Uh, definitely be back uh to resume?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
You're gonna leave the WebEx open, right? We'll just put it on.
Yes, absolutely.
I'll uh leave the WebEx up if possible, but I'll uh stop the public listen line and restart it in one hour.
Okay, thank you, Dave. 1:30. All right, see everybody.